Good evening and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting Tuesday, February, excuse me, December 8th, 2020 at 6:30 in the evening. Thank you for everybody. I'm wearing a mask. And since there's nobody in the room at the moment, I'll take my mask off, but then when some other people come in, I will be adding, I'll put my mask up. Let the record show that council members are all here and happy. You're all happy. Good. And so we'll move forward. Moved a couple of things around minorly on the agenda, but I don't think it'll make much difference. We'll have the election results moved up to before my mayor report. Council members, you have the minutes of the November 24th meeting in your packet, and do they meet with your approval?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no opposition, motion carries. Thank you very much. We have a public comment from Erin Hill. I'm going to invite Erin Hill into the room. I'm going to put on my mask, and we'll listen to public comment. So your recorder is bringing them in. Good evening and welcome to city council. This is visitor comments, so please step to the podium and it's visitor comment time, and this is your opportunity to come and speak to the council. Just step right up to the Sure.
My name is Erin Hill, and I'm here to speak today.
You can come right up. That's fine. Come closer so they can, the microphone can pick you up, please. It's on the computer. Just come closer. There you go. Thank you and welcome to council. There you go. That's good. There you go. We can see you now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I understand there's an agenda item about selling the Heritage Museum, and so I'm here to speak on behalf of the Hill family about our, about that particular item. And I, we, we collectively discussed it, and we just want to let the council know that the property, if it belongs to the Hills, who can remark that it's to the family.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the feedback, I don't understand anything.
Okay, so can you translate for me?
There's horrible feedback. It looks like councillor Corr can't hear either.
Neither can I.
I don't know. Did you hear any of that, Mr. Macario?
We're trying to, this is the joy of, of, of video. So Karen, can you help us out here? Okay, hold, hold, hold on. Let's see if we can help.
So Mary, her, her microphone is muted, and it might be that yours is on and where the feedback is coming, so it would be good to, to unmute hers and mute yours. See if that helps.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Okay, so I was just saying that I wrote a letter, and I addressed it to Mr. Pesimire that was on behalf of the Hill family, and that was sent, it was delivered to City Hall this past week. So hopefully he received that, and it was regarding some of the resources that were, the assets that were Henry and Martha Hills that were donated to the city, and so that's what this is in regarding to, is any surplus property that was donated by the Hill family. In many cases, the deed states that it's to revert back to the, to the family, and one of which is the Baptist church. So I'm wishing to have you take that off the, the table for the surplusing, and I imagine we would need to speak further about this, have further discussions.
Thank you for your information. I know Mr. Pesimire will be talking about this later, and I'm sure that they'll be following up, but I'm glad you brought this to our attention. I don't know where, where that situation is at this point, but I'm sure that it'll be appropriately followed up as, as this all moves forward.
She's on mute.
Yeah. Could you unmute her again, please? Hold on, you're
Can you hear me now? It's unmuted now. I didn't. The concern is that Hill family members have not been consulted during a lot of these processes. Some Hill family members have been here since 1847. They've never left the area, yet they don't have any information about what's going on with some of the resources in the town, and it appears that the city is selling some of the property that should have gone back to the family, and it's more than just the Baptist church. So in my letter, I'm asking Mr. Pesimire to please put a moratorium on any further sales on any property or assets that were Henry or Martha Hills, and within their donation land claim, because there are different sections. It's very different than Thorpestown or the town Magaria. It's, it's very specific to Henry and Martha's land patent. And so I'm asking that no further action be taken, and that you do follow up with us, because this has not been done for decades. So I'm hoping I can get a promise that somebody will contact the Hill family to discuss this.
Well, thank you for your input. I'm going to look at you. Mr. Pesimire, I'm sure you're going to be in contact with the family. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I actually just picked up the letter yesterday, so we're kind of looking into some of the documents that she referenced in her letter to make sure we have the, the information. So when I do meet with them, that we're all talking from, from the same information, so well, certainly we will meet with them and talk about specifics, and I'll reserve my comments on the, the surplus property until that point of agenda in the calendar.
And we have a plethora of documents. If you need additional information, we have a lot of information to substantiate all and any of the claims made, and, and we'd also be interested in seeing what documentation the city has as well.
Okay, great. So I'm going to let the, that you folks meet with each other and work that through. Thank you for taking the time to come in and visit with us today. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a pleasant evening. Okay, are there other visitor comments out there, Karen Johnson? Okay, we're going to go on to reports and presentations. We're going to move up the city recorder's report to the beginning here, so I'm going to have our city recorder make her presentation now, please Karen. And since I'm alone in the meeting, I can take off my mask.
Hi. Okay. The November 3rd general election results were John McArdle was elected mayor, Sarah Jobe was elected to position number five, and Kathy Martin Willis was elected to position number six. And for position number three, the two contestants were separated by one vote. Don Hedrick Roden with 1,818 and Michael Hicks with 1,817. This required a hand recount, and we have received the certified recount, and the count did change, but not the, but it did not change the results. Don Roden has 1,819, and Michael Hicks has 1,817. I also, that means that I also have the certificate of election for all of those that have, that were certified by the county clerk.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. Under my report, I'm adding something in here. We're going to talk a little bit about some mynet board positions, and I think councillor Morton has, since she is a mynet import employee, probably has something to add here.
I do. I need to declare a potential conflict of interest as a mynet employee, and I will be sitting out the voting on this one if there is voting to be done.
Thank you, councillor. Appreciate that. First, I want to say that with, you heard the election results, and councillor Hicks is our current representative on the mynet board, and he will not be continuing in that position, so we'll need to put a council member in there, and I'd like to recommend that we put Tom Takeus as our council representative on the mynet board. Is that going to be okay with everybody? And I see a consensus. I see everybody voting yes with a shake of heads. Is that okay? Yeah, all right. I, so ordered. We also have, Mike Lodge has served on the mynet board as our citizen representative for over five years. As a matter of fact, his term ended a couple of months ago, but he continued to serve until we have a replacement. What I'd like to recommend is that Michael Hicks fill the citizen position, because he knows what the council's goals, budget issues are, and will help make that interface between mynet and the city of Independence. So that is my recommendation for the city, for the citizen representative for mynet. Is that okay with everybody? I see shakes of heads. I hear everybody saying, yeah, I see shakes. Yes. Okay, that is a consensus of the council. All right, and that's unanimous with councillor Morton abstaining. Okay. I'm going to go on with the, thank you, folks. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, sorry to interrupt, just because we discussed councillor Hicks. I'm also not continuing, and I'm on the Wimpeg Board.
Okay.
The Wimpeg Board has made amazing strides over the last year with Mayor Coontz, and I would hate to see those abandoned, so we would need a strong representative there as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll follow up with that one. In the rest of my report, if I might, I just want to let folks know that you've heard me talk about how the importance of the junction at Highway 51 and 22, and I will be meeting with congressional staff from DeFazio's office later in the week. Representative DeFazio is the chair of the House Transportation Committee, and we're following up, because it would be good to have him on our side when they start passing a, Congress is looking at an infrastructure package. I had the pleasure of recently helping with a downtown video promotion for downtown Independence, wearing a little bit of a red suit. You might not have recognized me. I want to report that the League of Oregon Cities Board of Directors has appointed me for another term as president of the League of Oregon Cities Foundation, and I'm excited to be able to continue moving on with that. I'm also involved with, as a board member of the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, we are hiring a new executive director, and so the final interviews are taking place over the next couple of days, and I just want to let you know that following a many-year tradition, my wife and I will be hosting virtually the Mid Willamette Valley Mayor's Coalition, which they have been coming to our community in December for a number of years, and it's been a great promo for our community. So that's what I've got cooking right now. Let's move on to the city manager report, please.
So thank you, Mayor and councillors. So I just wanted to cover a few items, and then Sean Irvine is going to kind of do a presentation on some of the business support efforts that we've done through COVID and some of the other things that we've done for the community, so I'll be brief and let him talk for a little while. Just a couple of things to note. First off, we are, have made a change to hours at City Hall for the two-week freeze. We were completely closed, but we know that there are residents that need to come in from time to time and make payments and talk to our court. So the hours are limited, and we will kind of see how things go, but for, for now, we're going to have City Hall open at least the second floor, floor lobby from, on Monday from three to five, and then again on Wednesday from 10 to noon, and we'll see if more hours are needed, or if people are actually utilizing that, but we think it's, it is important that we do have some ability to access staff. People can still make appointments with any of staff, and we have numbers posted on our website as well as on the doors and stuff, so if anybody has business, they can make an appointment, and we'll, we'll do something that is, is safe for everyone. I have also changed the inspection services for building inspections somewhat, just in order to protect staff, and if I need to do more, I will. But we, we talked about it and talked about it with what the needs of development and construction community are, and so we're going to be having building inspections on Monday and Friday all day, and then half-day Wednesday morning. So we still, still want to make sure that things are moving forward, and, and we believe that we can perform all the inspections in those periods of time, and lower the amount of time that we have people in the office as well as out and about. The library is looking really good. I had the opportunity to go in there this week. It had been a while. I think you all know that we put new carpet in the library early on in the COVID response, and they have been working very hard on a large weeding project that was way overdue. They've also been refreshing a lot of the posters and signs and just all sorts of things in there, so I think when you go back in, you'll be surprised. I wish you could go, I'll go in and see it right now, but it's still closed for the, for the time being, but pretty pleased with all the efforts. They've still been doing a lot of online programs, a lot of other stuff. I'm doing as much as I can with drive, drive-up curbside library pickup and other things, so but they, in the meantime, they've also been making that place look a lot more inviting, so as far as the museum goes, they have been working hard on getting all the collection in their computer database and make sure that every piece of the collection is touched. They're going to have that done before they move, and I mentioned it last time, but we have bids coming in in a few days, and so I'm hoping to bring that back at the December 22nd meeting for your consideration to move forward with the improvements to the new building, and then moving forward from there. Just one last thing before Sean kind of talks is our utility grant program. We have not seen as much money going out on that program as we had expected, and so we are going to redouble our efforts to make sure that we're getting the word out on that, to make sure that people know how to access it. I think we are going to probably put something directly on our website as well as the other websites, so we would just want to make sure that it has had, everybody who would apply or needs to apply has had the opportunity to do so, but essentially, you know, if you're having troubles paying your utility, utilities because of COVID and you're resident of Independence, you can apply for these grants, and it can be used for not only your sewer and water, but it can also be used for garbage or mynet or other utilities or your power utilities as well. So we definitely want to make sure that the word gets out on that, so we'll be doing some more promotion. We'll probably be having a link on our website to Bono Bono, who is doing the program for us, but we're, we're a little surprised that we haven't had more action on that, and we definitely think there's probably a need out there, and so we're going to make sure that we, we are covering that and making sure that everybody knows.
Um, how many people have taken advantage thus far, do you know?
I do not know. I don't have any exact numbers, but we certainly can get those for them if you want.
And one quick question. Have we done like a, a direct outreach to, for instance, folks who are behind on water?
Yeah, certainly. We were talking to them about the program when, when we hear of anybody who's having issues, but this is a broader program than just our utilities, so.
And that, I just thought that would be a great launching point, starting spot.
It absolutely is, and we certainly do that.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to let Sean actually jump in here for a minute and kind of talk about, a little bit about the work that we've been doing in, in other areas during the COVID response.
Good evening, Sean, and welcome to council.
Thank you. Courtney should be joining me in a minute here. I'm going to share my screen while we says host disabled participant screen sharing. Jason, can you let me share my screen? Pretty pleased. There we go. Okay, hang on a second here. Okay. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
If you're nodding heads, great. Well, Mayor Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all tonight. As you know, we've been really working since the beginning of the pandemic to find ways to support our local business in the community at large, you know, and it's, it's always been a tricky balance, because you know, on the one hand, you want to encourage people to stay safe, stay separate, you know, kind of, you know, kind of maintain the circles of of contact, but at the same time, we, you know, folks, we want to encourage people to be able to get out and shop in a safe, in a safe way that supports our local businesses. So we've always really kind of looked to leverage these individual projects and events to find ways to kind of take one thing and have it create a multiplier impact, you know, maximize the benefit and create community activities that also support local businesses. You know, it's been a, it's been a hard year. I don't think anybody's going to dispute that, but it's also been a great opportunity to highlight the importance of local businesses to our community, but also really, this is a, it's unfortunately a great opportunity to highlight how much these businesses also rely on the community members to stay in business. They rely on their support, so I'm going to ask Courtney Williams, our downtown manager, to, to jump in here and talk a little bit about some of our early efforts, and then we're going to kind of tag team things as we go. So Courtney?
Can you hear me? Sorry, can you hear me?
Yep.
Everyone? Okay.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, so early on in the pandemic, when things kind of first started, as Sean said, things were tough, and so we were trying to create some spectacles that really kind of helped keep hope alive and families engaged. And so one of those was the Fantastic Fridays, which many of you might be, might remember. We had Elsa and Olaf on the mini parade, blaring Frozen Songs with a police escort, so that was fun. And then we also had the Osprey Watch Party, which was great, gave people the opportunity to watch our resident Osprey pair on a live cam, and so that was another really fun thing for families in and outside of our community to participate in, especially when everyone was awaiting the eggs to be laid. As we progressed through the pandemic and restaurants were unable to offer dining options, we actually partnered and worked with the city of Monmouth to create an event right around Mother's Day called the Great Mother's Day Picnic there, and that just promoted that both communities kind of help support small businesses by picking up food and treats at kind of your local favorite spots, and then going and picnicking with their families either at home or at a local park for Mother's Day. And so we got a lot of great business that, that weekend because of those promotions. We also kind of threw that event promoted the Mother's Day Gift Guide, which was a tool that just really encouraged supporting local businesses when it came to picking out and purchasing Mother's Day gifts. And then the hashtag Indy Takeout Project is kind of the bottom pictures there that just really promoted supporting local restaurants safely, but through getting takeout. As you can kind of see at the side of the bottom, we just basically promoted that people who purchased locally or local food post a picture with the hashtag, hashtag Indy Takeout, and then they were entered into a weekly drawing for a $25 gift certificate to a local business of their choice. And throughout the five weeks, we, in terms of like community engagement, we had just under 300 likes and I want to say about over 45 comments, with about 20 different people posting, keeping engaged over that time, so that was a lot of fun. And then just lastly, early on, many of you might have already seen this, but when businesses had closed, kind of initially, we had created a small business support video, which really promoted that message of taking care of our local community by shopping, eating, supporting small businesses, and that video has just over 13,000 views, so that's been seen quite a bit. And then if you haven't seen it and would like to see it, I can also send that video link to Karen, and she can share that with you all as well. And so, next slide, Sean. Thank you. So kind of moving into summer, we help businesses by creating some open-air public seating there on the plaza. We added some lighting and some new picnic tables to just create more outdoor seating for downtown restaurants, which was especially helpful for those who didn't have access to a patio or, or outdoor dining. And so this saw a lot of use this summer. We heard a lot of positive feedback from both businesses and community members, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works team, who helped kind of put the, the picnic tables there and prepare them, and then a thank you to Aaron Wymer as well for hanging those lights and taking them down for us. It's truly all a team effort. And then kind of on the other side of the slide, you see our, our drive-in, since we weren't really able to have our usual fun for concerts and movies in the park that we normally do, we kind of had to recreate the annual summer series this year into an 11-week movie series, which was a lot of fun, and we called that the Independence Drive-In. And so each night, we hosted about 90 to 150 vehicles on, on Thursday evenings, and that went from June 18th to August 27th, so essentially the whole summer, and we had a really great mix of people who would show up, residents and new visitors who came. A lot of the new visitors had never actually even been to Independence before, so that was really awesome to see. To help businesses really capitalize on this event, we offered free ad creation and promotion on the large drive-in screen prior to the movie beginning, and so that's an example down there in the right-hand corner of one of the ads that we created. And then we also posted a lot of these promotions and ads on the drive-in Facebook page, just to further promote visitation to local businesses kind of prior to the movie beginning. And then also, we did a drive-in giveaway. That's the gift certificates there from the Independence Hotel. Basically, we gave raffle tickets to those attendees that came in that either brought food from an Independence business, or were able to show a receipt or some sort of proof that they have supported a local business earlier that day. And so each week, when, or each week, we had a winner, and they received a one-night stay at the Independence Hotel, and we got a lot of great feedback from that event series from our businesses. That Thursday nights were especially busy for takeout because of the movie series, which was great, because that was the goal. And then kind of the last thing in the summertime that we set up with help from John Steinberg, who is the police maintenance supervisor here at the city, we were able to set up a sanitation station at Indy Commons in Kate's janitorial closet, where businesses from Independence and Monmouth could both come and pick up cleaning supplies and squirt bottles and PPE. And so far, we've had about a dozen businesses utilize that service from daycares to local restaurants. We have a sign-out sheet, so we can actually see who is utilizing those supplies, and there is still plenty of products, so we're going to continue to promote this as well as the pandemic continues. So I think it goes back to Sean.
Excellent. Yeah, and so summertime was really when the, the money finally started flowing down to our level through the CARES Act. We, obviously, the, the, one of the early things we did was we surveyed our local businesses to see really kind of what their pain points were, and, and obviously, you know, finance, finances was the biggest one, you know, they just, they, they didn't have the revenue, so you know, we were able to use our existing emergency loan fund or revolving loan fund to, to offer for local businesses loans. And then we actually were able to secure a grant from Business Oregon to offer And then we actually were able to secure a grant from Business Oregon to offer a grant and loan to local businesses. Nine local businesses got a $2,500 grant matched with a $2,500 city loan, low interest loan through that program. And then, you know, we finally were able to get that cares money. And so we're able to essentially take some of those those programs and supersize them. So we were able to put a lot of additional money towards grants with that cares money. We actually paid off those previous loans, turned them into grants for those local businesses. And then we're able to award 26 additional grants for local businesses. You know, we actually that that basically kind of just happened. I sent out an award announcement day before Thanksgiving. And so some in some of their honestly, we worked with William Workforce Partners to to run this grant program. And they've been offering grants kind of throughout the mid valley. So they have this giant list of businesses that they're contacting, that they're going to contact or are contacting. So some of our local businesses have already kind of been in touch and gotten their gotten their funding. Others are still waiting to hear from them, but we're hoping maybe by the end of this week, early next week, all of our businesses will have at least kind of gotten the initial acceptance documents from Land Workforce Partners to get that that money flowing. You know, the really so that's I mean, that's a total of 39 businesses with a total of about $150,000 awarded locally. And I would note also that, you know, really this is overwhelmingly like sole proprietor businesses, you know, maybe two or three employees, you know, would be kind of the majority of the businesses that we supported using this program. You know, the other benefit is we really kind of established a good communication system with our local businesses throughout the community. And it's enabled us to spread the word about other opportunities like around for Business Oregon funding. So 30 local businesses have also been able to take advantage of that program. And they're going to be getting that funding coming down shortly as well. That's probably going to be about another $125,000 just for independence businesses through that program. So really kind of trying to to get the word out and get folks, you know, kind of tied into those financial programs because that is obviously the most important thing. The other thing that we heard on those surveys, though, was they need help, the businesses need help repositioning, they need help pivoting or or moving online. A lot of times it was just, you know, I need somebody who knows what they're talking about, but I can talk through the situation and really kind of help me understand where I need to go. So we created a technical assistance program. And this is again, kind of a dual benefit, you know, we supported a local micro enterprise development nonprofit organization, Indy Idea Hub, by working through them. But then offered this technical assistance program where businesses got the consultation with a small business development center advisor. They got a digital review, looking at their their online, their social media, you know, their website and kind of giving a review of their footprint. And then they get connected with for one on one consulting on a specific topic, like, you know, better identifying and targeting, you know, customers. To, you know, building out a website, developing social media content, you know, kind of whatever the business owner identified as, hey, this is something that would really help me you know, move the needle for my business. It's been a great window into our local business community, frankly, just kind of understanding the capabilities and capacities and needs of our local business owners. I'm really hoping this is something that we can turn into a regular thing because it's been, I think, very useful for the business owners. There's been a lot of positive comments about it. We're still kind of working through the consultation. So it's not done yet, but the initial reviews are very positive. But it's great. It's really, I think, useful for us to get that broad perspective on, boy, there's a bunch of people that need this particular kind of help. We we should do something, you know, kind of focused, you know, targeting that. So I do actually hope to have Keith Schwarz, who's who's running this program. I hope to have her come in and present at a future council meeting once it's all kind of wrapped up to tell some of the stories a little better. But I think one anecdote, I think, is sort of what we're really hoping would happen with this, which is Parallel 45 Brewing. They have essentially used our the our grant programs to fund a purchase of a Crowler sealer. It's, you know, kind of essentially a canned version of a growler. And and then they're they're using the technical assistance program to develop the online ordering platform and website so that people can order online for either delivery or or they come in there and pick it up. So it's a great way for them to pivot, create a new a new revenue stream for themselves. And that's exactly the kind of thing we're hoping to have happen. You know, Courtney mentioned already the part, you know, that we've kind of partnered with Monmouth on several of these programs. And that's really been a nice, I think, you know, outcome of this this crisis is, you know, with the grants, we worked together to create the grant program and to market it. And with this technical assistance program, we've got 20 independence businesses participating in it. Monmouth has 10 because they were they were able to kick in some money for this and market it to their businesses. So, you know, again, kind of a nice collaboration. All of these programs, you know, it's the world in this together, we're all helping each other out. And so, you know, that adversity really kind of brings us together.
Okay. Back to me. So kind of moving into more of our recent business promotions there. In fall, we did our pumpkin picking at the park there on a, I want to say it was Saturday, the 26th in October. And that was a pretty successful event. We partnered with Beals Pumpkin Patch, who delivered about 200 pumpkins to the park, which you can see kind of some in those in those photos. And throughout the tour event, we had just about 350 people visit to get a pumpkin. And as each family left, we gave them $5 in Indy Bucks, which is a promotion that we kind of created specifically for that event, which is in kind of the corner there. And so those could be spent at any of the seven participating businesses, which were found on the back there. And to help promote kind of the themed goodies that businesses were offering during this timeframe, we also put together a bit of an ad to share with people so that they could see where to find some of the various like treats and where to spend their Indy Bucks, which is kind of the flyers there on the left. Just under, I guess, like out of all the Indy Bucks we gave out that day, we had just about under 75% returned and redeemed in downtown. So that was a great return there. Another promotion that we're currently doing is the Munchies Food Delivery Program. So with the change in weather and just the popularity of takeout, the city started working with the local food delivery service Munchies to kind of offer a free trial of delivery for any independence bar restaurant from October 1st to December 31st. So we're kind of nearing the end of the of the promotion. But so far, I think it's been really great for businesses that are participating because it allows them to kind of test how effective using a food delivery service would be for their business without having to pay fees or or have much risk. And then to promote shopping small this holiday season, we created these shop small and win scratch its that are at the right hand corner. So these actually started on Small Business Saturday, November 28th, and they're continuing until December 27th. But participating businesses are handing one of these scratch its out to every customer who make a purchase. And each scratch it is a winner. So everyone is a winner. It's a $5, $10, or $25 on all the scratch its. And so they can be redeemed to any of the seven participating businesses for products inside their stores. So far, we've heard just really positive feedback about this promotion. I think community members have loved receiving them. And then we've been seeing a lot of additional visitation at businesses with the redemptions as well. And then Glow Glow is something that's going on in downtown right now. It's our kind of small holiday light display that's currently brightening up Riverview Park. We have a couple large lit items and a LED lit Christmas tree. And then our letters to Santa mailbox is also down on the plaza, which has been installed. Thank you, Public Works. The lighting will stay up until January 9th. And so with this, we kind of just wanted to give the community something festive and safe to do with their families, since many of our normal kind of winter activities have had to be canceled. But it's also been a really great draw to bring people to downtown businesses after hours. And when talking with a lot of the downtown business owners, many have seen an uptick in nighttime visitation and foot traffic with the addition of the lights in the Santa mailbox. So we'll continue to see that throughout the season.
You can you can really see that what we're trying to do, which is not just, you know, we're not trying to do one thing. We're trying, we're trying, everything we do is how does this help get people into the businesses, get people shopping, patronizing the businesses, you know, with with the Indy Bucks, with the the the, you know, the scratch hits. You know, I guarantee you when those are redeemed, they didn't just spend $5, you know, they don't just spend the minimum, the minimum win amount. So it's a way to get people you know, supporting those local businesses better. And frankly, it stretches our our cares dollars, you know, that much farther to create that much better of an impact. And really, these were just city projects. And we've also been working a lot with partners to do even more. Corey is always working really closely with IDA Downtown Association. You know, helping them develop their their holiday gift guide, their restaurant resource guide, you know, who's open, who's, you know, what their hours are. The gnome on the Rome program in the Hoffin Heritage Festival. She's also been really the driving force behind Polk County Tourism Alliance and their their continued work on the Great Oaks Food Trail, which really highlights, you know, kind of these business, business, food sales, but also locally sourced food based businesses, food based products, which is a great, you know, kind of tie in for for some of our food ecosystem work. We've been working with, you know, like I mentioned in the idea hub, working with them at Indy Commons through a couple of grants to build out a shared use commercial kitchen and really, you know, kind of build out that food food based business ecosystem, you know, places for startup businesses to go to make their products, to sell their products locally. And right now we're, you know, scrambling to wrap up, you know, some business support, some more business support videos before the end of the year, really kind of again, going into the winter here, highlighting, you know, how you can patronize local businesses in a safe and, you know, COVID friendly kind of way. So, you know, the last thing I just kind of want to mention is we both really spend a lot of time communicating you know, to to do all this, you know, both individually, you know, with one on one and collectively, but really acting as conduits of information and resources and programs. We also really try to do a lot of listening because, you know, we're not the ones with the problems, you know, the business owners are the ones with the problems. And we have to listen to them to really understand where those specific pain points are and better target our promotions, our programs to make them as as effective as possible. You know, it's going to be a really, really rough winter. And we need to make sure that that all of our support is as targeted as possible to have the most, the biggest impact as possible. You know, because we've done a lot, there's a lot more to do before we before we all finally get through this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Or I can just just be done.
I have one question. First of all, it's amazing work you guys have done. I'm just I'm just floored by all the various ideas you come up with. Um, the only question I have is are the Facebook posts being mirrored on Twitter and Instagram?
Sorry, I didn't know you. You kind of broke up for a second. I didn't quite hear that question.
Are the Facebook posts being mirrored on Instagram and Twitter?
Courtney, I don't know. I know you've been usually doing it on Instagram. I don't know about Twitter.
No, I don't. I don't actually have access to the Twitter, but some of them are on Instagram.
Mirrored across the board on all the systems if we can.
Yeah, I know. So they all go on Nextdoor as well. We can check on Twitter, but I thought that was our policy. But if not, we'll we'll make sure that that continues in the future.
Additional additional questions?
I I do. So I guess probably the first one, actually, I guess they're both going to be for Sean or possibly Sean Tom. On the grants and things that are going out, is there a reporting element on that at all? So I mean, do we get any kind of feedback whether that's going to help retain a part time employee or if it's going towards rent or, you know, utilities or what? So that's question one. And then the utility assistance, is that only residential or is that available to business owners as well?
Yeah, so I think I'll take those on if that's okay with you. So I'll answer the segment first. As far as utility goes, that's for residential. The program was was designed that way.
I thought I'd chat.
Yeah, maybe Sean knows where, but we certainly have had informal conversations with people as we've been handing out the checks and getting things. It might not be a bad idea when we have time, when this is over, to kind of go out and send a formal request. But I don't think, Sean, unless I'm wrong, we've we've actually done anything to kind of go back to all the different businesses that have participated.
Yeah, no, it's it's, you know, yeah, the 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 question of what the money would be spent on is just to, I think, you know, we did not collect that information. We have had some conversations. I know, I'm trying to remember if it was ours or the Business Oregon application. I think there was a question in there about how many employees the business has. I don't know if we if we specifically said how many would be, you know, sort of retained through that.
And and I know and I know that, I mean, that this piece of grants is is new to the city. There's a learning curve. And I guess I would just offer that, I mean, typically with grants, there is some sort of reporting element that grant recipients are aware of when they get that. So maybe if there are future grant opportunities that we might consider incorporating a reporting piece in.
Thank you.
So speaking of future grant opportunities, I don't think Sean mentioned this, but there is a current grant opportunity out there that our businesses should know about. Matter of fact, any business in Polk County should be very active on trying to go to the county's website and put in a grant application for business assistance. This is really going to be kind of the last one, I think, through the cares money. The state gave $55 million to counties to distribute. And Polk County put up their grant program on Friday of last week. It closes Monday, the 14th at noon. But this is an opportunity for local businesses who have been impacted by COVID to go up and ask for what they need. There they didn't actually put a cap on it or a floor on it. So if you've been impacted by COVID and especially if you haven't taken money from another grant program or especially one of the federal programs, it sounds to me like the county is going to prioritize giving that money out. So it's a little bit more uncertain as to what you might get out of that. But it would seem to me that for very little little cost, which is just essentially your time to fill out a application, it would be well worth your businesses' times to participate in that program and see see what they might get out of it. So their their rules are you'll have to go to their website and see what they are. But it sounded to me like they were they were fairly flexible. So just want to make sure that all of our businesses were aware of that because that is going on right now.
Um, that brings up a question about the utilities program. You said you're not getting much input from the community on that. Have you tried posting that on the library board?
I I don't believe we have, but we're going to try a bunch of different things. That's a great place to do it. We were been just talking about increasing some of the community content on the library board and getting a little less library centric on that. So that's something we're working on as well.
Good. Thank you.
So I have a couple of things that first I want to, this was a great presentation. And I hope that we can chop it up and put it in take this presentation and the PowerPoint that goes with it and put that up so people can watch this without having to watch the whole council meeting. Because I think this would be really good for people. And I know that our chamber and our downtown associations, I think, would love to see this. I also want to offer kudos to Tom and Sean and Courtney and our Public Works folks. I've had the pleasure of working with you folks on a couple of these. And I want to let council know the timelines on some of these fundings that have come through, the rules that have happened have been challenging. And we have staff and connections within the community because of the staff all through the the city that have really made these kinds of things happen. You know, many other cities are just laying there and taking it where our people and our community, they're finding ways to move things forward, whether it's lights, whether it's promotions, whether it it creates a sense of optimism, opportunity, and let's let people feel like they're all alone. So I want to offer kudos to all the people who helped make this really happen. And people notice, if you walk through our downtown, you can still see people bubbling around. They're they're grabbing an ice cream, they're grabbing a hot drink, they're shopping within all the rules, and they're doing the right kinds of things. And so we're not just laying there, we're moving ahead. The independents continues to move ahead, not as fast as we want to, but we're still moving. So I just kudos to all the people involved. Okay, Mr. Pesimire, anything else from you this morning this morning?
No, Mayor, not unless that council has questions for either myself or my staff. I always want to make sure I I give some time for that.
I don't see anybody jumping up and down. So we're going to continue moving forward. We're going to, we're going to new business, the surplus property. And Mr. Pesimire, this is to you, and I'm sure you're going to talk this through. And also in light of the public comment that happened this evening. So I turn this to you, please.
So thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a resolution to surplus property and authorize a solicitor. and authorize a solicitation of the same property. This is the old museum site that I think you're all aware of. You know that we were having issues with ADA access and other things. And so this is really kind of the first step in us moving forward to selling it. If you take a look at the action memo that I gave you, there are a number of other steps that we need to, to take before the property was sold, including having a public notice, a public hearing and some other things. We wouldn't, and we typically don't do that till actually we have an offer on the property. So we certainly aren't at any point where we're i- in any position to not consider the information that we heard tonight and, and act on that. I will add that we did certainly do our background research when we first had the conversation about selling this property. We certainly heard that there was, so when the church who sold us the property might have had some rights to take the property back from, from that because it was donated. We looked at that and there was a clear purchase and sale deed that went through the process. We asked, the city actually did pay a significant amount of money for that property. So it wasn't donated to the city. It was actually purchased. So I'm very comfortable that we own the property free and clear of any issues. But with that said, we have time here. This isn't something that we have to act on immediately. So I think it would be good and respectful to listen to what the hills have to say. Have some conversations with them. Make sure we go back through documents that we already have and, and if there are older documents, take a look at those as well. So I don't think there's any, you know, fire here on this. So if council would like to just wait on this and have us bring us back at the next meeting after we've had some conversations, I'd be perfectly fine with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would very much like to wait on this and I'd also like to hear what our city attorney has to say about the process.
Does anybody object to that course of action?
No, I, I would agree with that. You're thinking like first of January or something, somewhere in that timeframe, we'd hear come.
Could be, I.
Let's see how it evolves. Yeah, so. But yeah, let, let's, let's see when it naturally comes to the forefront. If that's okay with everybody, we'll defer it till it naturally comes back. Okay, that's good. Moving forward, we now have a public hearing on a legislative amendment file number LA 202003. I have a script I get to read here. Uh, this evening we have a public hearing on legislative amendment 202003 to consider amendments in Independence Development Code, removal of public work standards from the development code. The city council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. The hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type four legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing tonight, with staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and Oregon and state of Oregon comprehensive, excuse me, state of Oregon statewide planning goals. Anyone who wants to speak, please use the speaker card provided. And when you speak, I'll recognize you and you have to state your name and address for the public record. The, before we begin, does any counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? Does anybody have a conflict of interest? I see no one shaking their head with, okay, so that's fine. I'll now open the hearing for legislative amendment 202003, removal of public work standards from the Independence Development Code. And I now, and I turn it to the staff for the staff report.
Mr. Perfect. Thank you very much. How are you folks doing? Nice to see everybody tonight. Basically what this code change would do is it would remove three sections of the Independence Development Code from the development code. The reason for that is because we have other sections within the city standards, the, the public work standards, the Independence Municipal Code, and even things like the Oregon Specialty Building Code that apply to these same issues. Because of that, we feel like these sections are are redundant, right? They're also kind of confusing, having them in multiple places within the code. So what, we, we sort of looked at the issue. We said, how can we sort of make all of these sections work in the best possible way? And we just came to the simple conclusion, why don't we remove these from the development code currently? Most of these standards, including things related to stormwater and subchapter 55, things related to cross connections or making sure that potential polluted water doesn't get into our water system. That's in subchapter 56 and then things like sidewalks, they're typically applied at the time when people are engineering their project and not at the time when they're going through a development proposal. Because of that, it's not me that reviews them, even though they're sort of in my set of codes to review. It's, it's not me that does it. And so who, who typically reviews these is our city engineer. And he uses the Independence Public Works standards to ensure there's no conflicts between the two, to ensure that they're applied at the right stage of development. We just sort of said, you know what, it makes absolute sense to just keep these in the public works design standards to keep them in things like the Oregon specialty codes and then to remove them from the development code. We did hold a public hearing on this and the, uh, before the planning commission, we noticed that public hearing. We also noticed this public hearing. We have received no public comments. We also sent this out to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for their 45-day notice and they did not comment on these proposals either. The planning commission looked at this. They thought this made a lot of sense. They forwarded a recommendation to you folks to approve it. That recommendation was unanimous. I think that's about it. Are there any questions?
Questions for the presenter? Okay.
Yeah, I, I had just a couple of issues. I think it's basically, it's a good idea. But I did have a little bit of a question about appeals of decisions based on the public works code as, as opposed to, you know, our development code. Does that come to city council then also? Or how does that work?
There is a standard, there is a process within the public works design standards to, if there's conflicts with decisions, also the public works director has a lot of latitude with how those standards work. So if for some reason it's just not technically feasible to actually achieve those standards, the public works director with consultation from the city engineer can try and find the best solution. I imagine that there's some sort of appeal procedure in there, but that's just not something that I'm, I'm quite used to. Now, I mean, as for an appeal, I mean, basically the vast majority of appeals of a sidewalk or something, sidewalk design or a stormwater design that you would see would follow that process right now. Typically at the time of a land use proposal, right now, we actually don't get a whole bunch of details related to stormwater, related to things like water design, related to how the sidewalks are constructed. And so because of that, you know, we, we process the application and then ultimately as it goes through the subsequent phase of further engineering and actually designing the, the technical components of the subdivision, that's where those sort of issues come into play. I will just give an anecdote to show why this makes sense to me. We just recently had a subdivision. And as part of that subdivision, the designer designed the stormwater system, or I mean, took a first cut at designing the stormwater system in regard, in, in relation to the stormwater standards in this code. Now, when we got that, we told them immediately, you, you understand that you're going to have to go through the public works design and standards too. And, uh, they did not realize that because all they saw in the code was the stormwater section. And so what we feel like this does is it sort of eliminates the confusion of what is actually required and when. So that's, that's our hope with this.
Additional questions?
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll, I'll make a, a couple of the comments here. I mean, the other thing that, uh, council should remember is things in the development code are technically on the 120-day clock. And so almost all cities have removed this from their development code. A lot of this code is actually in the municipal code. They've removed it from there as well. Council approved the design standards in 2018. So you've seen there, there were some modifications made in 2020 by the public works director. And we're going to talk about the best process for making sure that those are approved. I, I did look through the appeal information, Councilor Takeus, and I did see an appeal process for variance requests, but not necessarily for others. So we will definitely take another look at that and make sure that there is an appeal process. Every decision should have an appeal process. If we don't have one, by default it comes to council, but we also should spill it out so that there isn't a whole conversation that has to happen with the developer if they have concerns over a decision that was made.
Okay, anything from other people?
Um, I, I guess Fred, I think I've, I've shared my appreciation for all the work that you've done just on our code and streamlining things. And I, in that I also attend the planning commission meeting, I kind of get to double up on some of this. And this makes sense. It just removes a lot of the redundancy, potential for errors if we update public works. And then it doesn't, those updates don't get, you know, put over here in the development code. And so with that, if we're ready, I would like, are we ready?
No, I ha- I have to officially ask for, thank you though. If there are no more questions for staff, is there anybody who wants, anybody from the public who wishes to testify in this? Karen saying that there's nobody out in the hallway there and we've received no additional communication. Okay, thank you. Without objection, I'm going to close the, the public hearing and Kathy, it's now to you.
I would like to move to approve LA 2020 dot zero three as presented within the report without changes. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I, I hear no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And is there any opposition? I hear nobody opposing. Motion passes. Okay, we go, we go on to the next item, which is amends the Independence Development Code and I, Fred, is this to you also?
Um, I think that's probably Karen that can walk you through that one. Is that right, Karen?
Page 67.
It's, I think it's essentially the adoption of that, of the code change.
Yes, this is the formal legislation that will affect the change that you just approved.
Okay, so this is the ordinance motion, mo- activity. So if someone would start the ball rolling there, it's on page 68.
Okay, I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2020 dash 11 in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Takeus. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries.
An ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, repealing subchapters 55, Stormwater Management, subchapter 56, Cross-Connection Control, and subchapter 57 Sidewalk Construction, amends subchapter 33 Mixed Use Pedestrian Friendly Commercial Zone and Downtown Overlay Zone, and subchapter 80 Site Design Review Requirements and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill number 2020 dash 11 for the second time by title only.
I have a motion, second by Counselor Morton. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries.
An ordinance amending the Independence Development Code, repealing subchapters 55, Stormwater Management, subchapter 56, Cross-Connection Control, and subchapter 57 Sidewalk Construction, amends subchapter 33 Mixed Use Pedestrian Friendly Commercial Zone and Downtown Overlay Zone, and subchapter 80 Site Design Review Requirements, declaring an effective date.
And the third motion, please.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2020.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Corr. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. I hear no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
The motion has passed. The ordinance has passed and will be assigned ordinance number 1585.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one is the Water Master Plan Consultant Contract Approval. Mr. Cotum, I think you're carrying this one.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk to you about a master plan tonight. We have master plans in water, sewer, storm and parks. And we kind of have a two-part master plan in streets where we have a TSP and a maintenance plan. The master plan I'm talking to tonight is for the water department. A master plan is a planning document that is intended to present vital subjects, programs, projects and associated budgets for approximately a 20-year timeline. Today, we are presenting a water master plan proposal for the future, for future water treatment and distribution systems associated. And when I say water treatment, of course, that's where we make potable water or drinkable water. And the distribution system is the piping and pumps and reservoirs that convey that water through town. Staff is asking council to accept the proposal from West Tech Engineering to prepare a new water master plan. The City of Independence continues to exceed growth projections in the state of Oregon. A master plan is an opportunity to develop a roadmap to identify necessary improvements and associated costs to support growth. Continuous changes in technology, state and federal regulations are also addressed. The master plan includes both short-term and long-term development goals, project costs and funding options. Independence is on a new path to diverge from being dependent on groundwater wells only. Recently purchased water rights to the Willamette River will provide the city with a dual-source opportunity. And that, I think people will appreciate that in the near future. A new master plan would encompass all current and future water treatment facilities and distribution infrastructure. It will prioritize projects and simplify long-range planning goals such as the Capital Improvement Plan or CIP. The new document will take independence to approximately 2040 for water planning. The city would reevaluate the plan around 2030. West Tech Engineering was selected as the engineer of record for the City of Independence after a lengthy process in late 2017. West Tech has performed numerous projects and short-term planning efforts since that time. Currently, they are working on a wastewater master plan that will ensure independence's growth and to meet or exceed future and current regulations. The fiscal impact for this project, the proposal is for an amount not to exceed 165,000 without authorization. It is identified in the CIP for fiscal year in 2021 and 2022 and budgeted for $100,000 in 2020 and 21 budget years. So that's this current budget year. The project will split the budget years with the remaining funds provided in 2021. I think I have an error there. It should be 2122. System of Development charges or SDCs are the source of funding for this proposal. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to make sure I understand the fiscal impact. You're not going over budgeted in any fiscal year, right? You're only going with what's been budgeted for that fiscal year.
That is correct.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. Council, there is a, there is a motion if someone would care to make it.
I move to accept a proposal from West Tech Engineering in an amount not
I move to accept the proposal from West Tech Engineering in an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for preparation of a water master plan.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ransom Smith. Is there discussion? This is a good, that, master plans are great things to have. Uh, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, I hear no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we're now going to go to executive session. And I have to read my script here. The independent city council will now meet executive session for the purpose of reviewing and evaluating the performance of the city manager. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two I, which allows the council to meet an executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in the executive session. At this time, the council will adjourn, uh, for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session has adjourned, we will return to open session. Any decision from the executive session will be deliberated at this time. So we're going to go to executive session. So I'm going to ask all the council members, Mr. Pesimere and, uh, Ms. Johnson to stay, uh, on the, uh, on, and I'm going to let Jason tell us when we're ready to go. We are in, we go, our.